The Bartlett Committee of the Whole Meeting for October 1st, 2019. I call this meeting to order and again ask the clerk to please call the roll.
Trustee Cameron?
Here.
Carbonaro?
Here.
Danny?
Yes.
Gabrana?
Here.
Hopkins?
Here.
Ranky?
Present.
President Wallace.
President. First item we have under the Committee of the Whole Meeting this evening is under Community and Economic Development Chairman Gabrana.
Thank you Mr. President. We have one item on our agenda this evening and that is a BETA application from a current restaurant, The Still, and I would ask Tony to start our discussion. Thank you.
Thank you Chairman Gabrana and Mayor and Board. The Still has been in business here in town just a few doors down south of here for the past five years after the owners had purchased the building in 2013. They're located at 326 South Main Street. Their BETA application is for an expansion of their business into the unutilized space which for many years served as a barber shop directly north of their unit at 318 South Main Street. And in addition to that expansion and build out, they have plans for some facade upgrades as well, replacing the cedar shingles and the, replacing the drivet outside. They also, one of their reasons for expansion is they want to occasionally host some live entertainment and also to be able to accommodate some larger gatherings and within their restaurant space. I do want to note that the owners, Jim Leo and Brett Gaylord, they do not own the entirety of that strip center that's called Main Street Plaza. They own the northern portion and the southern portion has been owned by a separate owner, Mr. Eddie Kruger, for many years. So the facade upgrades that they're talking about and they're planning on doing applies only to their portion of the center, the north portion only. When they originally came up before the EDC at the August meeting, they, we had been discussing approximately $55,000, oh I'm sorry, $52,535 worth of upgrades. They had submitted a quote from Lionheart Construction that detailed nine different items that pertain to the build out of the interior as well as some of the exterior items that I just mentioned. Since that time, we've had some ongoing communications with Mr. Leo and he's indicated that they also intend to spend an additional $20,000 above and beyond that on mill work, obtaining tables, chairs and other equipment. So this would actually bring their total project cost up from about $52,000 to $72,535. So staff had originally recommended a $15,000 BETA grant when they came before the EDC in August and because of their commitment to spend an extra $20,000 above and beyond that, we've applied a similar percentage to their, the staff recommendation for their BETA grant. Tonight, we'd like to recommend a $20,000 BETA grant based upon them spending $72,535. That $20,000 would amount to 27.8% of their total project costs, which is more in line with the three prior restaurant-related projects that have come before you previously. And also, the applicant for this BETA grant, Jim Leo, is here tonight to answer any particular questions about The Still. I would be glad to answer any questions we have on this.
Any questions?
I just have a comment. Obviously, the BETA program is wonderful for the, for the restaurants in the Village and it's there for a purpose. And I was over at the restaurant the other evening and I had the opportunity of walking through there with Mr. Leo and he was showing me the improvements he wanted to make. And that, that area is vacant now. There's nothing happening there. I mean, it's just a waste. And I know that, you know, he's limited in the seating that he has at this point in time. And we had even talked occasionally about rotary going over there or some of the, having some other functions there and we could take up the entire restaurant. And if he has the confidence to make that investment here in our village and have that look, be, be an attractive, a place where we can congregate, I think that we should support him in every manner that we possibly can. And I would be in favor, 100% in favor of granting him the BETA, the BETA grant. So.
I do have a question. Maybe I'm just looking at this wrong, but first of all, this increases your seating to how many, how many extra seating do you project?
President and Board, actually, I think it's about 24, but there's another bigger picture of why we want to do this. If you come on Main Street from south to north, you see this beautiful new building that went up beside us in the same space and it's gorgeous. It kind of ties in with the town center. And then you see this, this middle, you know, our building and our neighbor's building. It's got the cedar shakes. It just doesn't fit in anymore. It looks like something from the old, you know, the old west out in Scottsdale. So it's, it's more than just adding the seats. We want to refresh the whole front of the building and make it a destination where people can actually, when they're driving by, "Oh, I'm going to stop in this place." But this, going back to your original question, it's about 20 seats, including some high tops, and depending on the bar extension, it could be another 10.
I don't know, maybe I'm just looking at this wrong. I'm looking at this page here where you said passageway to the new expansion and are the, is this seating in through here? Is that the same page?
Yeah, that's, there is a, there's a little wall that shows where we're going to move the gaming.
Yeah, that gets my next question. These other square boxes with the stools, the six of them, that would be gaming, right?
Those round tables with the other?
Right here, these, these right here.
Yeah, the ones that are closest to the back. It says E101, EC01, those are gaming stations. And then to the right will be, that's the bar extension, then there'll be some high, some high tops in the front. And then not showing on this picture is where the current games are now. That'll be seating for, expanded seating for a current bar.
Well, so there's no separation between the video gaming and?
Oh, there's going to be a wall there.
Okay.
We're going to push this as far back as possible.
I still guess I'm kind of not seeing what I thought. I don't know. The staff have a, what you, do you have this up there, what we're looking at here? What these, are these the game, are the video gaming over against this wall or is this the video gaming here?
The first thing.
Over against the far wall. And then there's going to be a wall that's not shown here on this plan, blocking off that entire video gaming section for the rest of the patrons?
No, it looks like the wall is right next to that circle with the four circles. That's a table and then there's like a wall right there. It's a partial wall. Do you see that? The curve?
Yeah. So what are these seats over here? What is this, this right here going down this section? What am I not seeing?
He's pointing.
Those are, that's, that's going to be the extension of the bar. Originally, we had some booths going in there, but that's going to be the extension of the bar.
It'll be a two-sided bar?
Yes.
Oh, nice.
But typically, isn't there a separation between the video gaming and where patrons are at or is that?
Restaurant?
Well, yeah. I mean, most restaurants, they have a separation between the two.
Yeah. The state of Illinois actually really only acquire, requires a separation. It doesn't even have to be physical and like, like a wall. It can actually be like a rope, like one of those banks, but it seems like the petitioner said, "Are you going to have one of those short walls?"
One of the short walls and understanding it's, it's a 21 and over period in that room, that one little area.
And we'll be doing a reinspection of his new gaming area to make sure that it falls with, within the state's rule.
It has to be in sightline of the bartender.
Correct.
Okay.
Which a lot of places don't have. I have a question about the facade and I'm a little confused as to which one of these is, see this picture here? I wish we had this up on the big screen.
Turn around.
That one. Which one of these is the new facade? This is the way it looks now. I don't understand what this is.
The one in the bottom where it says our name, the way it looks currently, then there's, there's two pictures to the right. The first one is the material we're looking at.
Okay.
And then the one, the other one is just more for the color scheme. We want to change the brick color to a browner, brown tone.
Oh, gotcha. Okay, that makes sense.
Start tying in with the other buildings.
Now, are these doors, the open up to air doors or?
And then the third, you know, and the third picture is, I'm looking at that material to replace the drivet on the carryout side. Right now, it's just, it's an oddball.
Okay. I get it.
So are you going to be expanding into the old barber shop space and the former JDN space or just the barber shop?
Oh, they're still there. Hopefully, they're for a long time.
Okay.
Just the, just the barber shop space.
All right.
What does this line up, Roberta or?
We have no permit or anything for this.
Okay. This is concept.
Well, there is a permit currently to knock out the wall in there.
Interior.
How do, how do the discussions then line up with the new uniform code stuff as far as the facade and stuff like that?
We have to look at it. We haven't seen it.
Are you behind? Just kidding.
We're all behind.
And is, is the owner of the, of the other half, Mr. Kruger, is he interested in updating his facade or will it be disjointed?
Probably not.
I've contacted him to let him know what his neighbors were planning on doing and tried to encourage him to at least look into doing something similar and he's just, as he describes it, not really in the position at this time to do that. More interested in actually listing it for sale and trying to sell his portion. But we did contact him to let him know what was going on and that, and encourage him to upgrade his if he could.
Okay. I think it would be worth a discussion at least to have it similar to the facade if there's going to be that big, any improvements. Leo, to look into the same, something that looks similar to the streets of Bartlett over there, you know, that kind of facade type thing might blend in a little bit better. But that's just a suggestion. I think it's great. I think it's, these pictures, I don't think will do it justice, but I think it's a great use. It's exactly what we use BETA for, so.
Thank you.
I would be in favor of, I mean, the $20,000 just gets the site up to code. I would be in favor of actually increasing that amount. They applied for 50, we dropped it down to 20. What was the discussion like around that?
We were looking at the percentages that we, we've applied to some of the other BETA grants like Indian Express and Bartlett Tap and the Indian Grocery Store, Siri. So I think we were trying to apply the same type of percentage, you know, considering the numbers that they were applying for. And as I mentioned, it had increased from $52,500 to $72,500 since the meeting.
Mm-hmm.
And therefore, that's the reasoning why, why he, Mr. Leo asked us, you know, if we would reconsider the amount based on that additional expenditures. We said we would.
How are our resources with the BETA?
I mean, so far this fiscal year, just the $50,000 grant that was approved last meeting for Mr. Rafidia, I believe the line item is $250,000. And also, we have probably two, three, four more coming up in the next three or four months.
So we need to be cognizant of that as well, but.
Oh, the money's there.
Right.
That's what he was asking. The money's definitely there.
Absolutely. Over $200,000 available.
Raise it to 25.
Yeah. I would be in favor of raising it to 25, just because it's a local business, it's been around here a long time and we just gave 50 to somebody new.
I would, I think we should, when will this come before us for a vote? Can we fast track this and have it on the agenda in two weeks?
We certainly could, yes.
Say? I didn't hear you.
Yes. You want, then you, is the board in consensus of raising it to 25?
Yeah.
Does anybody have an issue with doing that? I'd like to hear it.
The only concern I have?
I'm asking for clarification about how, how many more, that we're expanding the restaurant and not just expanding the gaming.
No, we're expanding the bar area. By moving the gaming, we gain seats in the front and then hopefully in a year or two. We have another step that we want to do down the road and that is install garage doors in the front so you can open it up and it looks like a little outdoor seating area. But to do that, we have to have the bar completely free of the gaming, so we're moving that in the other room. So there'll be two high tops in the front and that sits, seats eight people and then three on the other side and that's another 12. That gets us to the 20 and then whatever bar stools we'll have in the new bar area. The game is going to be way in the back. It's going to be out of the way.
He's also currently at the maximum amount of games. They have five games and currently, that's the maximum you're allowed to have, so he wouldn't be able to expand.
And that's a question, if it, in, in using the BETA money to expand the restaurant, then is, is the business eligible for additional gaming or is it, is it tapped, is topped off at where it's going to be?
No, he's not eligible for additional gaming. However, there is some legislation at the state level talking about expanding from five to six games. I'm not sure where that is in Springfield at the moment, but no, as of right now, he would not be eligible for extra games.
Okay.
But, but his site plan does anticipate there'll be six.
I think one of those, one of those machines is for cash. That's what, that's what that shows.
An ATM. Yep.
Thank you. I, I was just wanting clarification for that. And in one extra game is different than doubling the amount of games and that's just different than my?
I think there's so many games around now, it doesn't make sense to really expand it, to be honest.
Thank you for that.
Everybody seems to have them.
Thank you for that, yes.
I would ju, I would just add to my comment and it's primarily just because I think when I was thinking of BETA, it was more about supporting businesses that have been around here and really putting their blood, sweat and tears into making it. And if we're going to support somebody, I would, I would, I would like to see it go up to 25,000.
I agree with you 100%. And I would also like to add one thing that if we raise it to $25,000, I, I want to just make sure that we have a couple of legal minds on, on, here this evening and I want to just make sure that we're not putting ourselves in a position where we're setting a precedent, you know? And I know that we're all aware of situations that we've been involved in before, but if it's possible that we could raise it to 25,000.
Yeah, that's just their suggestion. That's just staff's suggestion.
Yeah.
It's totally possible for us to do that.
Fine.
Yeah.
Can we get it on the agenda then, two weeks? 25,000?
This doesn't need to go back to another committee then because the committee then looked at it once and approved it for the 15.
I mean, he's going to have to go through the process with the building department and it's going to be pending given his, sending us over his records, but we'll get it on the next meeting for 25.
Well, and then the Village wouldn't cut a check until after the improvements are actually made and we've got lien waivers and all of that good stuff.
That's how it works, yeah.
And, and proof that the expenditures have been made. Right. We, we require them to turn in all the receipts for the project, lien waivers.
Thank you very much that.
Thank you, Mr. Leo.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good luck.
Thank you Chairman Gabrana. Next on the Committee of the Whole Agenda, we have Finance and Golf Chairman Danny.
Mr. President, thank you. We have one item on the agenda this evening. It's the 2019 GO bond, bond review. And I've asked Todd if he would take this.
Thank you, Chairman Danny. I'll give a brief summary of this. Delaina Welkimer is also here. She's our, our financial advisor with Baird. If you want to get any technical questions with the bonds and, and things like that, but let me start with the brief summary. We have been talking about these bonds and the sewer project, Devon Avenue Excess Flow Facility Rehabilitation Sewer Project for quite some time now and we've settled on the project, what needs to be done. And also, at this time is a good time to refund the 2009 bonds. So this is a combined, combined bonds. Part of it, $8,429,000 would be for the sewer project and then the remaining par left on the 2009 refunding bonds, that's $5,695,000. The reason why that the, the 2009 bonds are primed for refunding is because of the, the low interest rates that are currently available. We're, we think that estimates are showing $480,000 in savings with the present value. So as far as the, the ordinance that's attached, this again is basically, this is the only part where the board would approve the bonds. So once they're approved, and this would be at the next meeting, that would give the authority to the president, the clerk, treasurer to sign off on any changes or the final amount as this is a parameters ordinance. Again, the parameters style ordinance, it sets the limits and then when the terms are finally determined, then they're signed off by the approved ordinances. The parameters, they're set at the total power mount, $15 million. The annual, which they, the term is 20 years, so they mature by 2039. The annual maturity amount is also limited. That's the power mount to $1,200,000 a year. Maximum coupon interest rate was 6% and the tax levy total amount, $1,915,000. It also sets a minimum savings on the refund at 3% of the power value and we will be way over that, almost 8, 9% savings. Attached is a couple of hypothetical or examples of the, of the debt schedules. The first one shows the combined of the refunding and the new money portion. It shows that the annual debt service for the sewer project fund would be, it would range from $555,000 the first year to $551,000 the final year. The annual debt service would be abated each year and this debt service would be paid from the sewer fund annually. We've already been going over sewer rates for the last two years, increasing those in preparation for this project, the Devon Avenue project, as well as the wastewater treatment plant rehabilitation, which would be coming down the line. The second part, the second debt service schedule just shows the example or the old debt service compared with the new debt service. And that's where it shows a annual savings right in the range of $50,000 to $55,000 per year. Total debt service savings, $531,000, but that's where the present value would be $478,000. Skipped over the, the interest cost rate, so the overall interest cost rate is estimated to be 2.33%. That's very good. I know the interest rates have been at historical lows for quite some time. We've taken advantage of this by refunding the fire station bonds in 2017 and now they're still low and very good condition for refunding the 2009 bonds and also issuing bonds for the sewer project. So the next step then would be to bring the parameters ordinance to the board the next meeting and then the sale would be scheduled for the end of October or the, or the first of November if, if it goes, continues to go. So if there's any questions or any other details you want me to get into, I'd be happy to answer those. If we need to, we can have Delaina explain more of the bond parameters and the details.
My only question is about the project in itself. We have been talking about it for probably many years, but we really haven't talked about cost, hard numbers. I know at the last, maybe two meetings ago, three meetings ago, we talked about this project costing a potential $13 million. Now we're saying it's costing 8.5. So I think we're kind of all over the map with these numbers and also, I'm extremely interested to know about the IEPA loan process versus selling bonds. And I would actually like to look at numbers, hard numbers, real numbers to compare the two. Because one is 2% over 30 years, right, 30 years for 20 and this could be as high as 4.5.
We're estimating right now it would be 2.33 is.
Total yield? Total?
Total.
Yeah.
Why does it say in here? Rates are, rates are very good right now. As far as the, the $8,400,000 that we came up with, I'll, I'll let Dan explain that.
Yeah. As far as the project costs, as you know, we've been work, we had been working with MWRD for several years, went through tons of different options. Recently, went through, once they settled on that they weren't going to allow us to increase the restrictor, we looked at the different options of rehabbing Devon, bringing it down to bittersweet or building storage and sending it back to MWRD with the, the these cost option being, bringing it down to bittersweet, which is the direction that we're headed in. Once we got the feedback from the board that that was something we wanted to look in, I had the engineers look more specific on, we had a route that we went and walked and were able to look at what hurdles were there and then everything else. They were able to give us more fine-tuned numbers. That's how they got to that 8.5 million. So that was good news. As far as the EPA loan versus bonds, can we go after EPA loan? Yes. Does it take more time? There's a few steps that would be needed. For one thing, we've been in the EPA loan process with our bittersweet plant for several years now. We still are not guaranteed money on that loan. We're hoping to get it, we're planning on getting it, but it's not a guaranteed thing. That money, we're looking at probably July of 2021. We're not even in the process of the Devon project loan. You know, we haven't even applied for it yet. The fear I have is in order to get into the loan process, you need to do a facility plan. You need to have the engineers put a plan together, kind of showing all the different options that we looked at. They buy into that. That takes time. It's going to cost engineering dollars as well. Then you get in line for the loan. I don't believe we'll be on that, well, we don't know where we would be, but our goal would be to try to get the July 2021 timeframe, but since we're not even in that process yet and they already have said there's more project center is funding, my feeling right now is that we won't be on that July 2021, we'll be after that. They distribute the loan funds July of every year and then they call a bypass in January. So any project that is done and ready to go, if there's money available, because projects didn't move at the rate that they were intended, sometimes money gets opened up and you'd be able to jump onto that. There's no guarantees in any of that and every time you delay, it pushes us tighter and tighter into that. Not to mention that our permit for Devon expires one year from yesterday, which we're not going to make at this point anyway, so we're going to be into that process with EPA getting an extension and all that. So, long story short, we can't apply for it, we can't look at it, but the bond rates are 2.33 versus 2 right now. The EPA loan is showing 2. That is a difference, but the uncertainty of going that route of having the engineering done, going through a facility plan, hoping we can get it, but no guarantees. If there was a guarantee, we would get it, maybe we could do that, but there's no guarantees that we're going to get it. And every year that you delay, the costs of construction go up and, you know, there's uncertainties and right now, the bond rates seem very favorable.
There's also no, no guarantee that the IEP rate will be 2% in 2021.
Right.
The way they write.
Right now, they, right now, they sent out a letter back in August where they have been buying basically. been buying, basically bonding at two point seven-five percent, two point eight, but they're writing the loans for two percent. So they're losing money on these, they're writing off point seven-five percent or whatever. They are reevaluating that because of the prod, you know, there's more projects than there are funding, they're reevaluating, they're going to be, we don't know where they'll end up, but they're saying, we might not be able to give that discount, so it might be at that two point seven-five percent or whatever that rate is at the time, they might not be able to discount it. So there's just uncertainty there, the rates right now in the bonds seem very favorable. Seems to be the option, the route to go.
How many sewer connection points are covering this eight point five million dollars?
It would be the Cook County portion of it. I don't have that off the top of my head, but we can get that.
Because eight point five is a lot of money. It's a lot of money for the Cook County residents to pay. They already pay money on their tax bill to have their sewage treated by M W R D, and I just feel that eight point five is, is a lot of money, and we need to look at alternative methods to achieve this, because I don't think we should be on the hook for this.
Are you saying alternatives to the?
There just needs to be.
Lift station down to Bittersweet, or alternatives for funding?
There has to be a method that we achieve our goal here without spending eight point five million dollars, whether that is to go to the I E P A and, or the E P A and ask them to help reduce the, the limits that we operate at our Devon excess flow plant. I just, I, I look at my tax bill, and now I'm looking at my water bill and my sewage portion, and it's, it's high, and we're, we're feeling the pinch, and, I don't know, to put this on the residents is, it's, it's big, so.
I think we've already looked at multiple possible options to, to alleviate this problem, and N W R P, they pretty much said we are done, right? They're, they're out.
Just for, I mean, the village has its own treatment plant down at DuPage at the Bittersweet plant that we're going to be doing renovations. They have the same situation, excess flows, we have treatment there. So the DuPage residents are paying for it, the Cook County residents need to pay for excess flow, so it, M W R D is basically saying, they don't want to deal with that excess flow, you deal with it. DuPage, our own plant, we're dealing, we get excess flows there. So everybody's paying for it, it's, unfortunately, it's not going through your tax bill, that portion of it's going to end up going towards our plant, that Bittersweet plant, getting dealt with it there, but one way or another, all the residents, whether you're Cook County, DuPage County, are going to have to pay for that excess flow. I, I, it is a lot of money, I mean.
Yeah. I, I know we talked about stop, you know, infiltration of water in the sewer lines, we talked about sewer lining for residential services. Have we looked at our whole Cook County side and determined that there's no storm sewers? More storm sewers going in to the sanitation lines?
Continue to look at our system. You have a lining project?
Do we know one hundred percent that there are no storm sewers going in to sanitation lines?
No, I do not know that, we have not.
I think, I think we need to do more work on that end before we spend eight point five million dollars. We need to look at that whole system and determine that, because this, it, it could be, what line are you talking about putting in? An eighteen inch line?
It'll likely be a sixteen inch force main down to Bittersweet.
Sixteen inch? We might be able to reduce that to eight, and the, the cost savings could be substantial. So I think we really need to look at our aging Cook County sewer system before we just say, hey, let's just throw eight point five million dollars at this, when we're going to have to look at this other problem later on down the road.
We do look at those, at the aging sewer system.
Well, I just asked him, and he's not one hundred percent sure.
And we continue to look, and we continue to make improvements, and we continue to budget for it, and we make, we're making inroads, and, but that will take time, and interest rates are low right now, and, you know, and we have a time limit within which to accomplish this or face fines. So I acknowledge and agree with you that it's high, but we've explored multiple options, and, you know, M W R D has gone as far as they're going to go, we've spent, looked at that and several options along those lines. It's not something the E P A, U S E P A or I E P A can grant us. That is up to the M W R D.
Well, if, if they allow us to maintain our Devon excess flow facility for ten years, while we figure out.
That's up to, the, the limit is set by M W R D.
We've, I think we violated it once, and the chemical that you add to the sewage could have been off, you know? We don't know why we were in violation, you know? It wasn't, it's not like every time the Devon excess flow plant goes on, we're in violation.
Oh, but they changed the, the regulations so that.
Five years ago, when that plant went into excess flow, we did not meet the limit. Didn't matter how many, how much chemical we put into it or not, the, the plant is undersized for the flow that it's taking. We were able to get the E P A to go back to our old limits while we were working with M W R D in that, so we currently have the old limit, which, for the most part, we can meet the limit. We've been told by Illinois E P A, U S E P A is pushing this, that in two thousand twenty, a year from now, that limit will be back, and I suspect if we haven't done anything, we will, if that plant runs, we will not be able to meet the limit that they set, and it's mainly because they're looking at the influent, what's coming into the plant, to what's going out, eighty-five percent removal. And when it's essentially storm water at that point, it's very dilute wastewater, it's very hard with the equipment that we have out there, and I'd be welcome to walk you through that facility, to remove eighty-five percent of hardly anything that's in it, you have to remove eighty-five percent of what's coming into what's going out. So it gets very hard to do it, and even with the best equipment available right now, when we were looking at upgrading Devon, there still were not guarantees that we were going to make that limit, only because it is such a dilute waste stream network.
I think what you're doing, though, with all due respect, is you're proving Trustee Hopkins' point. It's diluted with so much storm water that we can't get it down to eighty-five percent, so I know we've been working for years and years and years trying to fix this storm water issue.
Exactly.
But maybe we need to keep trying.
We will. If I knew that we could spend eight and a half million dollars on the collection system, and the issue goes away, I'd do it, but there's no guarantees, because people have illegal connections, and you can go in there one day, tell them, get that disconnected, that sump pump disconnected from the sanitary, as soon as you leave that basement, geez, people know how to do it, they put it right back in, because they don't want their backyard to be wet. So there's no guarantees, and that, I mean, we had that same discussion with M W R D. There's no guarantee that you, I mean, we've, we've essentially redid our, we have a brand new system east of Oak, north of the tracks. We haven't done the services, but hopefully in the spring we'll get, we're going to do some more lining west of Oak, and we're going to offer up to residents sewer lining program on the services. We're hoping that some of them will take that, but we still have excess flow at Devon. It's not like we've seen a drastic decrease, and that's a big chunk of the Cook County area that we did, and we haven't had a huge decrease.
I think, I think that's why I'm, I'm kind of stuck on this, because we've been talking about a potential for sewer lining for residential services for years, but we haven't seen an ordinance yet. We haven't seen anything to do that.
We have, the, the plan's been already approved in the budget, it's just a matter of, we haven't had a lining project, we didn't do a lining project last year, we're doing one in the spring, and with our proj, now, residents can go and get pricing, but when you're trying to do one service, the price is going to be enormous. So we're tying it on our project, hoping that the cost for a resident will go down. We've got a fifty-fifty program, and we haven't advertised it right now, because it's not going to be till spring, but the plan is over winter to get that out and try to get some residents connected up with that.
I, I think my hope with all of this is to look closely at the aging sewer system in Cook County and try to fix it, and not run a sixteen inch force main, run an eight inch force main, or something that will achieve our goal, but we're going to have to still look at the aging infrastructure of Cook County.
Because all that eighty-five percent problem is going down to Bittersweet then.
And, and then there's going to be issues down there.
Yeah, I, I, I totally think that we need to really rethink where we're spending money when it comes to our water issues, storm water and sewer, just because we've been talking about this for a really long time. I mean, you could literally build ninety percent of the houses over their French drain system to make sure that their water goes into the right place when their sump pump goes off, for way less than we're talking about here. But I also know that we do need to do this at some point, but I'm, I'm, I'm a little bit torn with the, the questions about having so much storm water into our sewer system and all of the work that we've done around that concept, without having any answers.
Yeah.
And I know that we've attempted it, and what we're saying is that a storm water's going in there, storm water's going in there, well, that's not going to get fixed when we shoot all this storm water down to Bittersweet, then we probably have a problem down there with our dilution.
No, it's, because it's taking all of DuPage County, we have a better, we have a, a normal flow, so your influent is a regular waste stream. So when you see those peaks during a rain event, you're comparing it to your normal effluent, to your, uh, influent to your effluent. The problem with Devon is you never have flow unless the plant.
It's triggered, unless it's triggered.
Only influent and effluent.
So it's all storm water.
At Bittersweet, you have a daily flow, so you have something to compare. The plant at Bittersweet, and that's, the engineers looked at it, can handle taking the Cook County flow with minimal upgrades when we do the upgrade to be able to handle it. So I think that is the best solution. If I knew I could drop down to an eight inch force main, if I spent X dollars on the Cook County side trying to do it, I would, but when, if you're putting a lift station in, putting in a force main, you're only talking about material costs at that point of a sixteen inch to an eight inch. I don't know how much money you're spending in the Cook County side to get to an eight inch, but there's not a lot of difference when you're running two miles to, to Bittersweet, whether it's a sixteen or an eight.
Yeah, I'm not concerned with that, I don't think, that's kind of a red herring. What I am concerned with is alleviating the long-term problem of our storm water going into our sewer system and expending more and more money, wearing out equipment to try to dilute it more. That's what I'm worried about.
I mean, Bitter, DuPage, it's, it's not only Cook County. I mean, I know you want to focus on Cook County, but we have the same issue in DuPage. We need to be doing more and more, and it's not going away, we're not the only community. Every town has the same problem, and, I mean, if there was a magic bullet, I would, I would have, we would have found it by now, but there, no one's found that bullet yet.
Is there a way we can reach out to the E P A and ask them to extend our limits, or keep them the same, so we're not in violation?
We're, we're going to be, because a year from now, those limits, they said we're going to be in there. We're going to ask for it, if they say no, if we get into violation, then we'll be asking for a compliance schedule. That's kind of how it would play out. If they don't give us the extension on keeping the current limits, then we'll operate what we can. If we get a violation notice, then we'll be meeting with them and saying, well, here's our plan to address the issue, so.
Dan, isn't, we only get a violation notice if we have a really large rain event typically?
Typically, that's when we have to run that plant, yes.
Yeah.
And it's, they don't, if you have one excursion, they're not giving you a violation, it's typically, they look over a period, and if you've had multiple, that's when you get the violation notice. So it would, I don't know how long it would take, it all depends on the rain and all that. And we're trying to work with M W R D as well to try to keep the restrictor, we have an I G A that expires in January of next year, where the, currently the restrictor is out. We've requested that they extend, keeping that restrictor out for another two years, just to give us time to get all these improvements done, which will help us with our limits with the E P A, so. We're trying every avenue we possibly can.
Do we have monitors in the sewers to find out what area the majority of the flow is coming from?
We have done flow monitoring, we continue to do flow monitoring to find those peak, and, and we do smoke testing, we, we've, we've been doing, I mean, you just can't do the whole town, is the problem, it takes a lot to do the whole town.
And what's the total cost of the bonds if you, like, take the amount that we're saving on, because the new total cost of both combined, if I'm understanding you correctly, two thousand nine and this new additional amount is two point three-three-ish, two point three-five or whatever. Is that right?
It would be slightly more, I mean, they're sharing part of the, they're sharing our advisor costs, they're sharing legal fees, but that's, that's a very small part of it.
So if you take the four hundred and eighty thousand we're saving on the refunded bonds, and you take that out of our total interest expense, do you know what that percentage would be?
Delana, I think, no, I don't, not off, not off the top.
So that's your, that's your real expense, because otherwise, we were slated to spend this extra four hundred and eighty thousand dollars, now we're going to spend two point three-five percent, whatever that is, you have to take that four hundred and eighty thousand dollars we were going to spend and, and give us our actual cost.
Good evening. Are you talking about netting out the interest?
Netting out the interest that we're saving, yeah.
The interest cost, we're estimating for twenty-year term on the sewer is three point five million. So, you know, the, the savings of five hundred and thirty thousand is offsetting. You're, you're talking about a three million dollar cost versus a three point five?
Three million dollar expense on eight and a half million. Okay. Does anybody have something?
I think we need to hold off on that and do some more repair work to our sewer system, and then readdress this, reach out to the E P A, ask them to extend our permit under current limits, and reevaluate this. That's my take.
As far as, as far as the bonds go.
Yeah, as far as the bonds go, obviously, if there's no project, there's no.
Yeah, if there's no, if there's no project, but there's still a refunding.
Yeah, we're still going to refund the other ones.
Absolutely, if we can still do that, if we can pull those out and.
Yeah, we could have a conversation with Chapman and Cutler and have the parameters ordinance revised to just reflect the refunding of the series two thousand and nine. Within the parameters ordinance, it did show a not to exceed of just the refunding portion of.
That was six and a half million.
Six and a half million, was it? But we could ask Chapman to revise this to just reflect the refunding for savings.
I've seen, uh, these interest rates currently seem pretty low at the two point three-three percent.
Absolutely.
And so we could be shooting ourselves in the foot, waiting a year, thinking we're going to save, and the interest rates jump up again, as do the I E P A loan interest rates. So, you know, we may save in one area, but you lose this opportunity at these low rates, that interest cost will go from three million to, you know, four million with a slight increase in rates, so it's something to also.
I wanted to add, I know you want to do the collection system, but we need money for that. So maybe we bond eight-point-five million on the collection system and put it there.
Well, I think we need, I think before we bond for that, I think we need to have an engineer come up with estimates so we know where we're at.
You're talking about total replacement?
I'm not opposed to that at all, but we need numbers before we say, here's eight-point-five and you only use two, or you need ten, you know? I think we need to look at hard numbers.
But Dan, isn't what you're talking about in the collection system like you do with your streets? You have monies and you spend them toward resurfacing streets.
Nowhere near what.
You could always spend more than that.
We have four-hundred thousand that we spend right now per year. Four, well, lining, I think the total was like six-hundred thousand, but you're, if you're talking redoing the whole Cook County system, I think you're talking about replacing the system, whether it's lining, whatever, the entire Cook County system. We can put numbers together for that and find out what we would need to bond for that, but it would take many years to get through the system. So I would expedite that.
If we're talking about postponing anything at all, we need to hear from some other people here because this isn't, this isn't a one-vote show here. A lot of these other people are in DuPage. We're talking about this going right now to the board next time we meet and voting on pushing this through, correct?
Yes.
Yes. And if we don't, we're going to have to wait some time.
Well, there's the option of breaking it up to just the refunding portion.
The refunding portion is a slam dunk, obviously.
Combined, you could bring both ordinances back, you know, a breakup of just the refunding versus this combined ordinance.
Why don't we do this? Why don't we break them up and refund them as long as we still get the same deal with a smaller amount, which I doubt, but hopefully we will, just to refund the smaller amount versus them to combine, to find out that out and we can refund those and then come back with some more detailed information from maybe Dan and Todd and find out where we're at with other options and what EPA says. Obviously, there's some questions that some board members have on what the EPA says. Just trying for a solution here.
Yeah. I hope this doesn't end up costing us more money in the long run.
Yeah.
I really do. And my concern is even if we, even if we cut the storm water infiltration in half, or the flow, the flow, the overall flow in half, we're still going to have to do this project. And we've got to figure out a way to fix it. So whether it's a sixteen-inch or six-inch, we've got to do something.
I don't totally agree with Trustee Hopkins' analysis of it all is on Cook County residents because DuPage County has this overflow, like Dan was saying, forever we've been doing that. So it's, it's something that has had to happen for years and we've been kicking the can down the road, so.
And I can't imagine lining all of the sewers or even replacing them in total, which I think would be a tremendously expensive and a gigantic mess. People are not going to be happy if we go tear up their backyards to replace the sewers. So I don't know that that's going to get us where we need to go. And I remember we talked about the other alternatives extensively. We can't put those giant tanks in people's backyards like that. I mean, that, that's, that's terrible.
I don't think anyone's talking, I don't think anyone's talking about putting giant tanks in people's backyards.
Well, but that, no, 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 we did talk about that. We had.
What are you talking about?
About millions of gallons of effluent in someone's backyard because it's got to be held until we can slowly release it through that restrictor.
And I think if we line the sewer systems and correct problems that have been going on since, for fifty years, you know, we have sewer systems that are fifty, sixty, seventy years old. I think once you fix that, you might be able to build a million-gallon storage tank and the cost is a million dollars. So I'm not opposed to selling bonds to pay for the collection system and fixing it like we're going to need to do anyway. So if you're talking about costing more money, I think if you run a sixteen-inch force main and then go back and still have to fix the collection system, now you're double paying when you can fix the collection system and then determine how, what size force main you need to run, or if you just need to build a million-gallon or a two-million-gallon storage facility.
But to fix the collection system takes years.
I'm not.
And I don't think we have years.
Well, this, this should have been fixed twenty years ago, I think. I think if you really look at the budget, Mr. Moraz, I think you will see not very many sewer repairs being done twenty years ago, or fifteen years ago for that matter. Because we're just now lining stuff that's a hundred years old. We are just now lining stuff that is a hundred years old.
But Adam, that's the reality. I mean, who thought about lining those things years ago?
I'm just telling you that you need to fix your aging infrastructure first before you determine building, believe me, this is, to sit up here and say, I want to spend eight-point-five million dollars is an easy fix. It's an easy fix. But is it the right fix? I don't believe it is. I don't believe it is. To send millions of gallons of storm water to Bittersweet is not the solution.
And that, and that's your, that's your opinion. We get that. I think everybody in the room understands that, but there's six board members up here that have a different opinion.
They're more than welcome to talk.
Yeah. So if we have a straw poll right now that's a majority that says that this would go through as-is bond, we'll take a straw poll now and we'll go move, move it forward. If we don't have a majority, then we'll refund what we can refund and we'll move on from there. So, Mr. Chairman, I would suggest you do a straw poll.
I just want to ask you about the refunding. Did you want to break that down and just talk about the refunding first?
No.
No.
She'll get back to us if the refunding is going to be any less of a savings if there's a smaller dollar amount.
Basically, basically then what we'll do is take a straw poll on the refunding and moving forward with the, with the project that we have.
Does any, do we have a vote?
Yes.
Start.
Is it the way it is?
Move forward.
I don't have any at this moment. I, I see something. I see, I believe Adam has some valid questions.
I am concerned as Trustee Ranky was about extra expenses. I certainly don't want to see that happen.
I guess I'm next. I guess I, I'm very concerned about the interest rate that we can have on bonds right now. And I'll tell you what, I'm torn, I really am, because I know what's in front of us now and I'm very sympathetic to what Trustee Hopkins is saying. And, and if I were forced to make a vote this evening, I'd like to have a little more information. I agree with Trustee Gorbina. I'd just like to get, I'm leaning towards, towards Trustee Ranky and Trustee Camera because I know we have something, a burden hand, and, you know, nobody had the foresight. I feel basically the same way about the water rates that we had. We hadn't increased our water rates for five, seven years, whatever the case would be. Now we're like Michigan water and.
Is that a yes or a no?
That's almost, I'm almost done. He's been talking all evening. I'm going to take a couple minutes. And I go through the village and I hear about the increase in sewer rates. Well, the boards at that time apparently didn't have the foresight to maybe have incremental or increases on the soaring water rate. We wouldn't have been confronted with these large increases. And it's the same thing that you're saying, the boards previous did not have the foresight to see that. So I would, at this point, like to gather a little more information, but if I had to vote this evening, I would vote in favor of moving forward. We know where you're standing.
Yes, three and a half, no.
I vote moving forward.
So it's four and a half.
Well, and we have two week, to the next meeting.
Yeah.
You can get us some additional information in that time and I say we go to the board with it, so, yeah.
Mr. Chairman, that's all we had this evening.
Might I suggest with that additional information that we.
Yeah, let's be a little more specific.
You have two ordinances, one with just the refunding.
We can do that. We'll put one with, one with just refunding and one with a combined amount, which is the total amount.
Yeah.
I would suggest, I would request, I would request that we have information on the, every effort that we've made with the EPA, where we're at with percentage of lining and, and things that, efforts that we've taken to reduce that storm water intake, just so people, and I agree with Trustee Hopkins, just so residents, myself included, don't think we're doing this off the cuff and just going the easy route, let's, let's actually prove that we're going and doing, we've done everything we possibly can to this point and before we're going to spend that money. So let's do that. All right?
That's all we have, Mr. President.
Is that good enough? We got that, Todd and Dan? You got enough info? Thank you for being here.
Yes, you're welcome.
Thank you, Chairman Dany. Next we have Police and Health Chairman Carbonaro.
Thank you, Mr. President. We have one item on the agenda tonight. It's a request to create a smoke and vape-free ordinance. With that, I'll turn that over to Chief Pecallos.
Thank you, Trustee Carbonaro. The Village of Bartlett has always been on the forefront of ongoing efforts to prevent youth access to tobacco products. As you're aware, years ago, we created an ordinance that prohibited the possession or sale of individuals under the age of twenty-one possessing, possessing tobacco products, or eighteen years old, I'm sorry. Shortly after Bartlett High School was built, we created an ordinance that prohibited the use of anyone under the age of eighteen using tobacco products. A few years ago, we revised the ordinances to include vaping products. As you're well aware, back in April, Governor Pritzker signed what was known as the Tobacco Twenty-One Law, which prohibited the sale, purchase of tobacco products and vaping products. The issue with that law is that it prohibits the possession of tobacco products by anyone under the age of twenty-one. It was our recommendation to update our ordinances to prohibit the, anyone from under the age of twenty-one to possess, purchase, or sell tobacco products or vaping products, as well as to amend our ordinance to prohibit anyone from using tobacco or vaping products under the age of twenty-one on school property. At the last board meeting, the village board asked us to look into a possible revision to the ordinance that would prohibit the use of tobacco products, electronic cigarettes, and alternative nicotine products in municipal-owned buildings and on municipal-owned properties, with the exception of the golf course and parking lot areas of Bartlett Hills Golf Course. During our research, the police department discovered that they recently revised the Smoke-Free Illinois Act that allowed home real units of government to regulate smoking in public places as long as the resolution was not less restrictive than state law. That was different than the way it always used to be where we would just have to report it and there was no enforcement action. So after looking into that, we would just ask the village board to consider creating an ordinance to, to create a, an ordinance similar to the Smoke-Free Illinois Ordinance that would prohibit anyone under the age of twenty-one from violating the Smoke-Free Illinois Ordinance in public places and within fifteen feet of entrances, exits, and windows and other areas, stuff like that.
And it would preclude vaping as well in those areas. So this draft ordinance before you prohibits it from places of employment and from all public buildings, not necessarily outdoor areas. Some towns have a similar ordinance, Wheaton would be one, where they don't allow it in outdoor dining areas. We did not go that far. The way this is before you, it's up to the owner of the business to decide whether or not to permit it in outdoor seating areas because different people have different setups. And, and if patrons don't like the policy that the owner picks, say they allow it, it may, you know, push business away and vice versa. So this leaves that particular decision up to the owner or operator of the, the restaurant that has an outdoor seating area. But otherwise, in places of employment and in enclosed public spaces or places, you know, smoking would be prohibited. As Deputy Chief Pecallos said, it's essentially the state law. There's a bill pending to expand it to vaping. It's not yet passed, but our ordinance would do that and we anticipate that that state law will also be adopted as of January one.
In regard to the smoke and vape-free ordinance, as Attorney Moran has mentioned, currently there are, there are several other communities such as Schaumburg, Wheaton, Aurora, Palatine, Springfield, Chicago, and Glenview that already have enacted similar Smoke-Free Illinois ordinances prohibiting vaping, electronic cigarettes, and tobacco products. Also too, in regard to prohibiting anyone from possessing tobacco products under the age of twenty-one, several local communities such as Hanover Park, St. Charles, Elk Row Village, Offman Estates, Aurora, and Downers Grove have already enacted ordinances prohibiting the sale, purchase, or possession of tobacco products, electronic cigarettes, or alternative nicotine products to any one person under the age of twenty-one years of age.
Does this ordinance cover parks and open areas that are owned by the Village of Bartlett?
No.
Like Razika Park?
No. It does not prohibit it on outdoor spaces.
Because I know at our last meeting, or two meetings ago, you mentioned that we are going to allow the different, the other taxing districts to write their own ordinances or rules pertaining to smoking and vaping on their properties.
Outdoors.
Outdoors, correct. I feel that the Park District doesn't own Razika, so they won't have control over it. We do. I strongly feel that smoking and vaping around kids is not wise and I don't want to pin parents against each other. Some parents vape, some don't. People have different views on it. So I think we need to also encompass Razika Park since it's village-owned in this ordinance.
We, the problem we were running into is you get into other things we own like rights of way and outdoor areas around our buildings like the Village Hall, Bartlett Hills, the Public Works Building. So we did not go beyond that way. Any of our detention areas and things that we own potentially would be, you know, covered if you were to say all village-owned property. So we didn't get into those distinctions because we started looking at it, caused issues. Razika Park is one example where it's leased to the Park District, but it's owned by the village. It's kind of a red herring, but there's several outdoor areas owned by the village. Now, I use the example of my client, the Schaumburg Park District, where we passed an ordinance. Schaumburg has an ordinance similar to this, but the Park District adopted an ordinance saying no smoking, I can't recall if we said vaping at that point, in outdoor parks. But, you know, parks are kind of a defined term for a park district, whereas village has a lot of different open space that we own that are, you know, are all different.
I think I understand that and I think that if staff could take a look at parks or other areas, obviously fifteen feet from the door behind Village Hall is not my main concern where kids are going to be traveling. I'm concerned with parks that are owned by the Village of Bartlett and so forth. So if there's other areas that kids frequent, I think we need to ban it if it's municipal-owned because the Park District could potentially pass their own vaping and smoking ordinances for their parks, why wouldn't we? So I, I don't.
I'm not disagreeing.
Yeah, no.
I just think that we should do this and I think, because this is a little different. This is Smoke-Free Illinois, expanding it to the village, which is buildings. I don't think we should fool with that portion now. We need to figure out what those open areas are that we own and we could do what I'm suggesting for that and try and differentiate between detention ponds and, you know, I can't think of parks that we own other than sort of the golf course, you know?
Bartlett Park.
I mean Bartlett Park.
Bartlett Park. And Razika. There's really only three main ones.
That makes sense.
And we lease those to third parties, but those would make sense to outlaw there.
And I think.
So that there's no question that.
What you get into too is there's going to be a lot more hype around vaping now, and I can see Trustee Hopkins's point, because you've got people that are sitting out at Raiders game vaping at Razika, and somebody's going to be like, now they're going to be all tense about it, and there's, there's going to cause issues.
Yeah.
I think, yeah, and out at the, along 25, I think there, if we call out specific parks.
I personally find it really appalling that a 20-year-old that just got shot at in Iraq can't come into the state of Illinois and buy a pack of cigarettes. I think that's pretty appalling, personally, but that's the state law, so. So we'll deal with this one, and then we'll look at that later? Or do you want to bring something that will be similar to?
I'd like to bring this. We can come up with that pretty quick. I just need the list, you know, list of parks, and I think we should do it.
So this encompasses Village Hall?
Yes.
It's a place of employment?
Yes.
Okay.
And the Public Works Building and.
Is that it?
That's it.
All we have.
All right. Thank you, Chairman Carbonaro. We will be adjourning to executive session to discuss security procedures and equipment pursuant to Section 2C8 of the Open Meetings Act, which means that we're going to be in here, which means that we got to clear that area. So we're going to recess for about five minutes, adjourned with the recess. Do we need to, we'll call them that.
Yes. Adjourn to executive session, that someone.
Yeah. We'll do it later.
I don't want my taxes.
Let's just have a motion to adjourn.
Can you pay my taxes?
I make a motion to adjourn in a second over there.
I moved to adjourn.